Computer. It is July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at ten AM. Harney County Court is. Completed its executive session and we are now in regular session. We admit people waiting. Good morning, everybody. As I stated, it's July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at ten, at ten thirty AM. I may have said ten, but it's ten thirty AM and Harney County Court is in its session, in its regular session. And we always start off with the pledge, so if everybody would please join, stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so. Agenda, late items, any late items for, for the agenda? Not hearing any agenda approval for today, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five county court session.
Remove to improve the agenda as presented.
I second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda as presented. Any further discussion? A motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is minutes for the previous July second county court regular session.
Has everybody had a chance to look at them? I move to approve the Harney County Court meeting minutes of July second, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve the Harney County Court regular session minutes from July second, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 and opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, uh, right now. We have. Um, a couple of updates. Uh, Mark.
Desjardre.
Desjardre. Desjardre, uh, from Oregon Department of Forestry and Brian Needham. Now, in the past, if we don't have updates like this, the next topic would be opportunity for public comment. Briefly looked at this, and the reason we had done that in the past. Um, was just out of facilitation for people that were doing updates. I'm gonna propose that we go back to. Uh, opportunity for public comment would be item six on the agenda. Well, it would be right after minutes approval. And that we remain with that structure. Just for consistency.
I prefer that for the public to come in, say, say what they need to say than if they have to get back when we do have. Um, a person who is giving us an update and they cannot stick around, we can, you know, occasionally accommodate that. But I, I just think it, it helps with the people who really wanted to say something, but they have to just be in and out within a half hour.
Uh, so, so with that, um, give me.
I concur, but are we, are we gonna change it today?
No, it's on the agenda. I'm just gonna leave it the way it is for today, but for future agendas, that's the way it will be presented.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, so then, uh, moving into updates. Mister Desjardre. Uh, thank you for coming today. Um, look forward to hearing what you got for us and the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you for having me down. Uh, my name is Mark Desjardre, so I'm filling in for the next three months or less. Um, for Dustin Gustavson, who's normally the John Day Unit Forester for ODF. So Dustin. Um, is currently filling an air attack role for ODF. We were able to get some severity resources. To get a two-state specific air attacks for fighting fire. And Dustin's one of the few people in Eastern Oregon area that has that qualification, and so he's filling that role for this summer. Um, as well as we have one down in Southwest Oregon that's doing something similar. And so. I've stepped in to backfill him for those kind of for fire season. Um, I born and raised in John Day, grew up there and started my firefighting career there at ODF, uh, John Day. And then kind of worked my way around the state with different places and different roles. Um, then in twenty twenty, was able to kind of make my way back to John Day and get back home. So. Very happy to kind of be there to do that. Um, originally, my plan was to come down and meet with you folks. I'm trying to meet all the county courts that are tied to the John Day ODF Protection Unit. Um, you folks were first on the list because I had gotten an email on day one of my job rotation that I needed to share a KPM survey with you, key performance measure survey. I had no idea, uh, what any of that meant, but I was just told I needed to forward it to the county court. And I had worked with Holly here to try and come down and meet with you folks then. Uh, and then we got shipped to the Rowena Fire, and so I missed that county court meeting. Um, but wanted to come back down as quickly as I could to set up that meeting and try and kind of answer any questions. Or explain what I think I know about all that. I do have some other updates of things that are kind of happening in the ODF universe and. Um, other pieces to that, but you know, again, wanted to at minimum be here to answer or, or provide as much clarity as I can around that survey. So. Um, again, from my understanding, those surveys go out to every county, uh, that has ODF protection within it on a cyclical basis. I think it's every five years, we're supposed to touch base with different counties. And so. This last go around within the Central Oregon District for ODF, we had, um, Wasco County, Morrow County. And, uh, Crook County, and I believe Harney County was the, was the fourth one. So, um, you folks got that from me. Um, and it's just intended to be kind of a touch point of, uh, making sure that we are. Um, closing the gaps, doing what we need to do. From my understanding, that may or may not have taken a hiatus during COVID. And I think we're trying to get back on all the schedules for all those things that we, um, were supposed to be doing. So. Um, if it's been a while since anyone has seen that, again, I, I guess I didn't even know it existed until I got it. So, uh, it's a good thing, in my opinion. You know, it helps kind of reinforce the relationships, um, with the landowners that we serve and the communities that we serve. And so. I'm happy to, I guess, hear or, or talk through any of those other aspects, whether now or after the rest of my updates.
Um, I think what prompted, um, and we're glad to have you, um, was that it was such a generic survey. It didn't say, you know, how are we doing regard to fire? How are we doing regard to? And we realized we don't know what else you do. And it was just a little too generic.
I appreciate.
And it, it made me realize, and I've been on the court eight years. And I've never seen that survey before. I don't know if it just went to the county judge in the past and they took care of it. I don't know. Uh, this county judge, but maybe previous, but we're glad to hear more about ODF.
Absolutely. And I'll take that feedback back to kind of our sales staff that puts that together and.
It's, I think it said on the survey or maybe in the email that annually we. Take the survey and again, I don't know if you're rotating it, but that is the first time I've seen it in eight years.
Yeah, from my understanding, it's an annual survey, but then they pick and choose different counties to try and hit, and then it's supposed to be on like a five-year timeline of, of getting back to each individual client. So, again, uh. Uh, I, I'm just a month into kind of filling this role, and so lots of drinking from a fire hose in those respects. Um. A couple of updates that I think are probably gonna be the most relevant for kind of Harney County. Um, the latest would be in the last legislative session, there was a re-rated bills that went through that had impacts to ODF. And the one that the landowners and people that, um, have a nexus with ODF that are gonna care the most about. Um, were probably tied to House Bill thirty-nine forty. And so some of the things that are tied to that is the landscape residency program, of which the high desert partnership. Has been the recipient of the last two rounds of funding from that landscape residency program. Um. As well as a rate reduction. So there's a, um, some changes in the funding mechanism. And landowners should see a reduction in their rate this next year when they get their, their forest patrol assessment for. The services that ODF provides for fire protection. Um, and I, I brought some maps down just to help, hope to help provide a little clarity about where ODF provides fire protection within Harney County. And then what pieces of Harney County are protected by the RFPAs. So, um, we can look at those a little bit later. Um, but the, the rates have been kind of on a steady increase with inflation and everything else. Um, and it got to a point where, you know, landowners have been, been saying for quite a while, hey, the, the costs are getting too much. We're paying more to protect the land than the land is actually worth, um, when it comes to timber production and stuff like that. There's not the infrastructure and the resources to actually be able to manage this land in a profitable way. And so, uh, the legislature heard that and made some changes and. They, there should be a fairly significant reduction in this next go around. And I'm, from what I am understanding. There's timelines and different pieces that will be falling into place, but it should be for the next three years at minimum. Um, a decrease of what, what we've been looking at, um, with those. And some of those are. It, um, functional changes of how firefighting costs and the agency is paid for. Um, one of the big changes is instead of. Our agency administrative services going out to all the different districts at the field level. The general fund, from my understanding, is gonna pick up those costs, uh, so the general tax dollars. Instead of each individual landlord providing for those services that, um. Sometimes live in Salem, sometimes live in area offices. For us, that would be in, in Central Oregon, over in Van Primal country. So some of those costs are getting pulled out of the rate that the landowners have to pay for fire protection. And are getting consolidated and were paid out of the general fund allocation to meetings. Um, a couple of the other things are. Uh, some changes with regards to the RFPAs. So, um, there's been hoops and hurdles in the past about trying to get old, um, kind of. Equipment that ODF has that's reached its end of life for ODF, um, and getting that to the RFPAs. Um, in the past, we've been able to give them federal excess property. Uh, FEP is what we call that, or FFP, which is property that they get from the federal government and after a couple of years they own it. Uh, but this now change, um, will allow. Kind of old ODF equipment to be sent directly to the RFPAs. They more or less get first dibs. Historically, we've been able to give those to the fire departments. Um, and then there was kind of some, I would say, policy clarification where. DAS said, the Department of Administrative Services said like, hey, no, these need to go into the general pool. You can't just give them, offer them up to the RFPAs first. There was a policy change in this last legislative session to kind of change that. And, and now we should be able to give any of our excess or kind of. Equipment that's aged out for ODF, um, over to, uh, the RFPAs so that they can, can use that for firefighting on their side of things. Um, there's also some additional funding that went to the RFPAs. I think it was a million dollars. Um, I'm not necessarily the best expert on all the different changes that have happened for the RFPAs. I would say Allison Blair, who is our RFPA coordinator, or Allison Rayburn, I should say, um, is, is the person that would probably be able to give you the most accurate updates for all that kind of stuff. Um, but I just, just wanted to have some awareness. That was also tied to, to thirty-nine forty. Um. A couple of other changes and or pieces, I guess, for awareness. Um, on the, um, in thirty-nine forty, there was some changes with regard to, um. Zone one ground that's only within Grant County, um, but what that has spurred is that there's supposed to be. A forest land classification review that is done in each county every five loops. Uh, Grant County, my understanding has never had one done. Um, and I don't know when the last time Harney County has had one done. Due to those legislative changes, Grant County will have to be done first. And so I think the plan is they're gonna start. Trying to work through that process this fall. I have to meet with the county court, um, to kind of start that. The way that my understanding is of that process is the county actually puts together the committee. ODF just kind of helps facilitate it and make sure that all the pieces are done appropriately. Um, but Harney County would, would be following up with that after, uh, with Wheeler County as well. And, and what it looks at is. The ground that ODF provides fire protection for, is it timber ground, is it grazing ground? And so we don't make that decision, uh, aboard that the county court appoints are the folks that kind of make that determination. And ODF just helps kind of facilitate through the process, which is, um, something that, that isn't, um. I guess the norm. So, um, just an awareness, the, the unit forester Dustin Gustavson, when he gets back. Will probably be reaching out in the next year or so, um, to maybe set that up for next fall, is my understanding. So. Um. And I can try and get you any more information on that, that process. Um. We've added some additional folks that are, are better at the policy of legal ease and that kind of stuff to help facilitate that process for us. Um, another change is this last winter, the ODF unit, or John Day unit, um. Used to have an offset agreement with the Mount Hear National Forest, um, specifically on some of the inset private in holdings within the Mount Hear National Forest. That offset agreement went away, uh, this winter, from my understanding. And so any private land that was within the Mount Hear boundary before, there's specific sections that were called out. Were protected by Mount Hear, um, and then we protected some forest service ground, uh, further north in Grant County. That all went away. And so now any private ground within, um, the John Day unit. That is not tied to a separate offset agreement with the Central Oregon Fire Management Service, um, more specifically kind of BLM out of Primeville. That is all protected by ODF again. So, um. One of the additional changes that we made for that was we recreated what was called the Monument Subunit in the north end of Grant County. So before, um, John Day was made up of the Fossil Subunit and the John Day Unit. Um, by adding the Monument Subunit, we've kind of split Grant County in half. So the north half of Grant County is controlled and managed by Monument. And then the south half of Grant County and the north part of Harney County that is within that protection boundary is now managed by John Day. And so. It enables us to have kind of folks provide more focus, um, or kind of John Day South to Burns, where we provide ODF protection. And so. Um, to that end, uh, we've been, I just, I think a week ago was down and talked, uh, now with all the folks down at. Burns and our agency dispatch center, tied in with those folks, um, you know, we have good relationships on the phone, but I think. Face-to-face meetings are always great. And so we went down and did that. And clarified a few things that were maybe of misunderstanding at the time that, that got cleared up with that land change of offset. Um, other pieces, I would say, tied to that would be you ask some questions about what else we do, um, in ODF other than fight fire. And so we have kind of two sites, there's technically three sites at statewide scale. There's state forest. Which we don't have any of over here. That's mostly Northwest Oregon. There's a little bit, um, in Clamath County. And then, uh, we have protection, which most folks are aware of with us, as well as we have what's called the Forest Resources Act. And that's generally tied to the Oregon Forest Practices Act, as well as kind of forest management, forest health type, um, work. And so, um, the landscape residency program lives underneath that site or that house of ODF. Um, my day job when I'm not filling in as the unit forester is I'm a field incentives coordinator. So I work with our federal partners, both NRCS. Forest Service, as well as a myriad of other partners. To help get funds to landowners for forest management when it's not economically viable to do it on their own, right? Things that they can't afford to do, but that we recognize need to be done to keep the landscape healthy and, and really. And so. There've been some relatively big changes in all of those fronts on the federal side. But also some positives in the sense of, um, the change that the landscape residency program received. In the legislature before, it was one-time funding, so each by name, they had to kind of re-up that. They've now created, uh, what they're calling the ZINTAX. So those nicotine pouches that, that every firefighter and forester uses. Um, are now gonna go into kind of a, there's a portion that goes to the rainy day fund. A portion that goes to OSFM, the Oregon State Fire Marshal's, uh, Department. For home hardening grants and then a portion that goes to landscape residency fund, and that will kind of run into the future. And so. Um, that programmatic change has kind of changed how the agency has looked at LRP before we had. Um, kind of a two-year window to get money out the door, get projects done. And then meet the legislative requirements. Now that those timelines aren't necessarily still relevant. We've got a longer window of time, which is one of the things that we heard from a bunch of our grant recipients. So it was, hey, you want us to do prescribed burning? There's only really a window or two within that due to weather. We can't get the prescribed burning done in that time period. We need these to be longer grant applications or opportunities. And so the system has changed to try and allow that to happen. As well as kind of long-term committed funding in those geographies to try and actually move the needle on, on making changes. Um. Other pieces there, like you mentioned, you know, we do work with NRCS, so, um, our forest resource foresters. Uh, we have Brandon Boss covers kind of Grant County and Harney County. And so he goes from, you know, um. North end of Grant County all the way to the Nevada border. Luckily, there's not a whole lot of trees down at the Nevada border, but that is technically his area of responsibility. And then, um, Matthew Brown, who's our other stewardship forester, covers kind of Harney County and Morrow County all the way up to the Columbia River. And so, um, again, luckily not a whole lot of trees on the north end of Morrow County, but that is their geographic scale. Um, generally, their focus is tying in with logging operations that are generally commercial. But what we've seen over the last few years is the increase in NRCS and other types of projects. Where we're doing Juniper eradication or thinning that normally would have been done as part of a logging job, but now can't be because they can't afford it. Those types of projects are now falling in their plate, um, and a lot of that ties back to NRCS work or the soil and water districts where, where some of these other grants that we have out there. Uh, to help with that. Um, the last two pieces I had online and help, I'll give you folks a chance to ask some questions. Are, we've made some changes with regard to prescribed burning across the state. So we've created a prescribed burning liability fund. And then we've created a process for individual landowners to be what are called certified burn managers. And it allows them to have the training and experience. And then once they've shown that training and experience. It gives them access to an insurance liability fund if they were to perform a prescribed burn and it got away. But they did everything right and, and something just went wrong. Those private landowners have that protection liability for that. So that was one of the big things that we heard from. Private landowners and talking about, hey, you know, how can we help you be successful in doing this? That was always a big red flag for most of them was that, hey, according to state statute, if a fire crosses my property line. Even if my neighbor is on the same page as me. State law says that that's considered an out-of-control wildfire and that ODF has to respond and put it out. And I can potentially get, um, billed for that cost of that fire being put out. Now with the liability fund, there's, there's more latitude and or insurance backing for those landowners that have done all the right things, but. Something happened outside of folks' control or, or whatever, um, to try and help address that. Um, the other piece with that is we don't know exactly what it all means on RFPA ground. Um, the rules, the way they were written very clearly state, um, what the process is on ODF protection districts. It doesn't, isn't as clear from my understanding of what it means on the RFPA. It ties back to. Who can issue the burn permit? So if it's within the ODF protection district, the unit forester, the district forester writes that burn permit. Um, if it's on RFPA ground, there's a question about who has the authority. My understanding right now is it's, it's maybe DEQ, but, uh, we're asking some questions to try and better understand that. Um, to try and help provide clarity to folks. And the last piece with that is, um, there are what we call prescribed burn associations. So OSU Extension. Um, as well as ODF are working through trying to help get those established. And what those are is, is very similar to kind of what we call our firewise communities. Where it's a group of landowners that all get together to kind of, um, work together on, on reducing fire risk on the landscape. Um, in their communities. And the prescribed burn associations are, in a sense, those same landowners that all get together, that agree that they're gonna share resources. And help each other when they're trying to do burning across different landownerships. And so. If a fire were to cross a landowner, um, if they've signed on to that prescribed burn association, they're not gonna try and go sue their neighbor or something like that. Um, but it also enables them to share resources amongst each other. And so that prescribed burn association stuff. Is relatively new. Southwest Oregon has several that have kind of been going in, in kind of the. Jackson, Josephine and Douglas counties. Um, but we're in the process of trying to create the first one in Eastern Oregon. There is one in Central Oregon as well. Um, but they're working on trying to create one, um, in Grant County right now that. That still trying to figure out all the nuance of, but right now the idea is that it will be. Um, some relationship with our firewise communities that we have across the county. Um, and then tied in with, with that and trying to leverage the different relationships that are already built for those firewise communities. Um, and then the last piece, I guess, was, um. Some of the other things that we, we do that you may not hear about that we do, um, you know, we do participate in a high desert partnership. We're also part of the Harney County Wildfire Collaborative, as well as we are part of the Grant and Harney Fire Prevention Co-op. And so those are some of the other pieces that we do that you may or may not know we're doing in the background, but trying to coordinate with all those other partners. Um, so we're all on the same page. That's all I have for you at the moment, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm not familiar with the Grant-Harney Fire Prevention Co-op. Can you tell me?
Yeah, so, uh, it actually originally started as the Grant-Harney Wheeler Fire Prevention Co-op, but what it is, it's, um. Uh, firewise coordinator for Grant County, uh, which was Irene Jerome, um, and then Tyler Bales is taking over with Grant Soil and Water. Trying to step into those shoes as Irene's trying to slowly pull herself out, MAB retire. Um, as well as ODF, uh, the BLM, um, Burns Fire Tribe. As well as, uh, the fire chiefs in those kind of geographies. So I think the Heinz Fire Chief has attended in the past. Burns Fire Chief, um, John Day Fire Chief, um, Senate Fire Chief, a myriad of those different folks. And the idea with that is the focus is doing prevention work. So. You may or may not see like, uh, those red flags that come out during kind of red flag warnings for fire danger. They kind of help facilitate and coordinate getting those out, passing the messages to the folks that have those to, hey, stick these up today. Um, and then as well as sharing information with the communities about fire danger and fire risk and, and when those things come up.
See those maps?
Yeah. So I've got two that the, the way that the maps are kind of drawn, they, um, they're both, they, they cross boundaries there, so. But here. So here's one. And so the way. This works is this blue line is the ODF Protection District Boundary. And so this is the John Day Unit's boundary. Uh, we go over into Crip County a little bit and then come down into Harney County. The green ownership is BLM, or sorry, the green ownership is Forest Service. The orange is BLM and then all these gray are private. And so if they're. Outside of the blue line, that would be the Sylvie's Creek RFPA. And then these ones here are protected by ODF. Again, there's small in holdings throughout the forest service that you'll see that are all protected by ODF now again. Um, and then you've got these lines here that kind of designate the differences within the RFPAs. And so the way it works is that you can't have an RFPA within the ODF Protection District Boundary. And so they generally butt up against us. And so we historically have had a rind around the forest service. And again, that goes back to the forest land classification. Where the county said, hey, this is all timber ground and should then be protected as such. And that's how you kind of have this strange line that is kind of just buffering the forest service ground where you've had, um, the forest kind of approach into kind of the range line type stuff. So, again, um, comes down into Harney County and then goes over here and we've got these small little pieces. And then over here again, um, you'll see some more stuff. You know, by van, so pieces up in here, kind of frost mill and some of that stuff, and then over towards Unity, um, and then there.
So. ODF, other than their administrative fees, is largely funded by the fees from landowners. So does that mean that the federal agencies like Forest Service and BLM also pay those fees to ODF?
They do not. So they provide their own protection and so they don't pay us for protection on that. They pay for their own firefighters on their protection.
So only private.
Only private in, in this geography. Now, we do have a Western Oregon, Western Oregon Operating Plan. Which is in agreement with the BLM. So in Southwest Oregon, where there's a lot of ODF and BLM checkerboard. ODF actually has a contract with the BLM where they pay us to provide fire protection for that. I don't know what the future looks like with the changes on the federal government and the firefighting agency that they're creating. That may or may not impact that relationship, but for right now, the only landowners that, or the only people that pay. Are private landowners that are within this blue boundary. And that is the John Day Unit, the Primeville Unit, which is Primeville Sisters, as well as the Dowls Unit, make up the Central Oregon District. And so those rates are kind of standardized across the entire district. And so. A landowner in Hood River is gonna pay the same for timber protection as a landowner in Harney County. Um, and then same thing for grazing.
So was the boundaries and the per reason for this, uh, change between Forest Service protecting those private, uh, in holdings? Was that changed just for coordination efforts for the most part? I mean, and delineate who was responsible for what? Is that, I mean, or was there a withdrawal by the Forest Service to protect those because of some other concern or?
No, for, for my, and again, it happened before I kind of was in this role, but from my understanding. It was based more on the idea that the system that we operate under is closest forces. And so dispatch kind of tracks where all of our resources are. And so their call, when there's a smoke called in. They're sending the closest fire engine, whether it's a BLM fire engine, an RFPA fire engine, an ODF fire engine, or a forest service fire engine. And it had to do more with the backend paperwork and reporting functionality and or then. Situations where we get into cost shares and some of those different pieces. Um, that was really the.
It was more based on strategy.
Yes, from my understanding, yeah. And so, again, we have a great working relationship with the Mount Hear. Um, as well as with our BLM partners. We're all on the same page. It doesn't matter where there's a fire. We're sending what resources we can. If there's an ask, it doesn't matter if it's a forest service fire, BLM fire, so on. Uh, example is earlier this, um, month, there were some fires down in the Steens. We sent our helitaph crew that's based out of John Day. All the way down there and spiked them out on those fires because the local helitaph crew, I think, was out of the area. And they didn't have anyone. And so we're more than happy to help share those resources.
So then to, to kind of continue that, first resource or first closest resource being dispatched. Uh, when they do come on scene then, or the, the smoke fire, whatever happens to be. They begin suppression efforts?
Yep.
They don't have to wait for any coordination or approval by upper chain or anything? It's get on it, get gone?
Yep, no, that's exactly right. And one of the other changes is with the offset agreement, if it was offset, ODF wouldn't be coming to that fire to kind of do the fire report and do the closeout. We, because it was given to them out here, they would just handle it completely A to Z. Um, now, if there's a fire on any of those private in holdings, an ODF engine will be coming eventually. It, the first engine may be a Forest Service or a B L M engine because they're the first ones there. But we will, we will be sending someone down to kind of close out and finalize audit paperwork to do the investigation, figure out what started the fire, all that kind of jazz.
R- resources is one thing, reporting and management is another.
Yep, yep. And I can leave these maps for you folks if you want them. I've I've got plenty more back at the office. But um like I said, just wanted to kind of bring that. And then, like I said, the what this doesn't show, because it just shows kind of the ODF protection, is the rest of Harney County that is all covered by all of the RFP As. And so um, you know, the the big thing there is our RFP A partners are great at kind of the initial attack stuff. One of the things that I think has been a hurdle in the past is once we get these big fires that go beyond the initial attack phase, um and you've got, you know, local citizen volunteers that are out there doing that stuff, and they've got a whole bunch of other things to do. Um, I would say there's a statewide question of how do we provide better support to the RFP As in those extended attack kind of environments?
Um, and almost right on cue, um are are you um uh, do you know Melinda, our emergency manager?
We have met before, yes, part of the prevention co-op as well.
Um, so I I was going to ask, I mean, you know, for us at at our level, maps are going to pile up in a corner, but they might be useful to Melinda. Um, um, and you might. Without having to redo all that now, you might get with her, just kind of let her know what those signify.
Yep.
And then that way she can add them to her library and should she need them, she can pull them out.
Yeah, and we have a whole bunch of digital ones as well to make life easier for folks, so. Any other questions I might be able to answer?
Um, I was gonna ask about um how much state, so so you're providing protection for private land. How about state land? Is there state uh state forest land in Harney County and how much?
Not not in Harney County. So there is D L C D land, so Department of State Lands does have some land. We protect those as well uh within the county. And I think there's some, um, I'm thinking kind of the Van Drewsy area, I believe there's small chunks in there. And so ODF would provide the protection for those as well. Um, and then, yeah, State Forest, like I said, has land, but most of that is all on the west side. Um, either, uh, the Gilcrest State Forest is the only thing that's on the east side of the the Cascades. The rest is all on the coast range.
And that kind of answered my second question, because if there if there's no actual state forest lands, then you're not going to have any forest sales.
Exactly, yep. And so that that is not something that's in our environment. Um, as far as I am aware, I don't think that State Department of State Lands is doing timber sales on their stuff in our geography. Nothing that I've been aware of. We do coordinate with them, like I said, as part of the um uh high desert partnership and the Harney County Wildfire Collaborative, some of those types of aspects of it. But but there's not timber sales currently that I am aware of, but it is on the Department of State Lands ground.
And I will, my last comment, I will say last year during our fires, we appreciate the support from ODF. I said, I'll pass that along and up that we, you know, during the very needy time, you know, I mean, we appreciate all the resources that were here, whether it was ODF, uh federal, um Oregon State uh Fire Marshal Service, all of those, but but definitely Oregon Department of Forestry.
I appreciate that. I should have passed it along. Thank you.
Anything else? I learned a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, absolutely.
Um, um, unless you have anything else, we'll move on.
Nope.
All right, you're welcome to stay or, but we know you probably have busy.
Yeah, I was saying, we're, we've got the frame fire going currently in the Primeville, you know, a thousand acres of private lands that have been impacted, so try to get resources pooled up for that, so.
All right. Thank you for splitting away during.
Thank you very much.
Obvious fire season.
No, happy to be here. Thank you.
Have you talked to Brian?
I sent him two emails and I've not had any correspondence back.
So we will move on then. Um. Next topic up then would be opportunity for public comment. Uh, anyone in the room?
Okay, um, my name is Barbara Kennedy. Um, this is a official state plan, other than employment. Um, I do have some concerns. Well, I I do understand that you're working on employee and non-senior procedures, which I appreciate. Um, long overdue. And I do have some concerns that some offices, well, let's put it bluntly, the um state plan of the uh planning department is closed on Fridays. I don't really see any reason for that. I understand when the employees are uh traveling. There's three employees there that have benefited this county by working with other counties and that I understand. Uh, I was recently doing my water sample tests and stuff like that, and the office being closed on Friday was not um accommodating.
Um, so are you specifically referring to planning or environmental health?
No, Planning Department staff.
Okay, so are you are you referring to the Planning Department or Environmental Health and Building?
Planning Department, but um in terms of the Planning Director and the clerical staff there, we're both, um, you know, they just closed the office on Friday period. Um, I don't think that's necessary for people that aren't trapped. Um, so anyway, um, and and also I find that there's not just people within that department or at least one person within that department, uh but another employee, county employee that um I believe you're all aware of, that believes that she can operate off of her cell phone and doesn't need to be uh accessible to the public in her agency in a particular time. And I guess I think attending many Budget Board meetings and things like that, I think that the county employees um should even though county employees don't work forty hours a week and in a full uh session. Um.
Some do and some don't. Some departments are forty hours and some are thirty seven and a half.
Right, um, but I think the county should get their money's worth from their employees. Let's just put it that way. And um I'm not really seeking to terminate anybody, but I think they should be accounted for. Um, and I'll just leave it at that for now.
Yes, thank you. I will, as the administrator, I will look into scheduling and issues. I'll address it. I'll look into it. Any public comment from those online? Um, I don't see anybody coming off of mute or have their hand raised, so uh we'll move on.
Before we move on, can I just get back and ask? We had a Veterans Officer Update scheduled and we anticipated having that update.
Yes.
I didn't receive any correspondence.
They, it was acknowledged, but couldn't do it come and we haven't heard since.
Um, next topic on the agenda is uh recognition for service, years of service. And Jennifer Hughes from the Assessor's Office um is celebrating five years of service. And she um was given her um memento already. And Charlotte Campbell is celebrating ten years of service. Charlotte's with the Health Department. Um, so we thank those uh milestones, recognize those milestones and thank those individuals for service to the county. And I will get this uh memento to Charlotte. I usually like to hand deliver on myself versus just through distribution or something and tell people publicly acknowledge and recognize it um here, and then I hand deliver those to them usually. So next topic then is old business, uh flood flood mitigation planning. And um I seen Brandon in the building. Yeah, I seen him go into the clerk's office. Can you see if he's, he was supposed to be here for that?
I wasn't sure where we wanted that conversation go. I actually spoke with Brandon this morning because I had a conversation with him and a conversation with Mark Owens about coming to the meeting because Mark can talk more about when those funds will be available a little more concretely. And he was here when they did that study. But because he couldn't be here and talk about that, Brandon said, he asked if he needed to be here or not. I said, you are familiar with the plan. But basically, one of the ideas that was kicked around is we had that plan done by Klein Schmidt. And maybe now that we have funding from Oregon Lottery Funds, and we have more data because we just had a hundred year flood, maybe we should reach out to them and see if they would be willing to update that, see if any of the new data can be usable without using a line, share that funding on new studies. But that study is pretty comprehensive. I don't know if everybody had a chance to go through it.
I looked through it. I didn't read it word for word, but I I was impressed with the uh extent and the way they listed options and the way they were different. Is that a joke? Different areas where you can decide what what would need to be addressed, not addressed at all or prioritized and that. I mean, they didn't do that for us, but.
So I I had a conversation with Brandon as well, uh the Planning Director, Brandon McGowan. And basically the same topic that now might be a good time to reengage with Klein Schmidt and and have them review what they had done in the past. You know, as circumstances and situations change, whether this is the the approach. This is an option. I I don't think this is, we're locked in to do this, um and what and what's proposed in this plan. Um, but definitely time to look into it, decide if this is the direction and the route that we want to go to use those dollars or if there's other alternatives that we would like to review and and um consider. So um is he down in his office? I thought he was here. I seen him go into the clerk's office a little bit ago. But so anyway, so I don't know how much more at this time. And it's all dependent really too on the governor's signature until the governor signs that and those funds are still hanging out there. Um, and uh for the record, we were awarded three million dollars for mitigation um efforts. I think regardless of whatever we do, long range or what the big picture, whatever, I think some local mitigation needs to be done on the river channel itself as it proceeds from Highway twenty to seventy eight. Uh, you know, what it boils down to is volume of water. What the the canal has been encroached upon over the years to the point that it can't move the volume of water that it should. And I think that's one element that really needs to be looked at, whatever we do upstream or wherever. Because the backflow of that point is going to affect everything from there on up on up to canyon and could cause issues in weaker spots.
When we do have more conversations on this, I would like uh the gentleman that spoke to us right when the when the flooding had just happened and is happening, I think they came during public comment and and gave extensive public comment on, you know, they've been, they know from back in the seventies how stuff went and then when certain things happened that made it worse, et cetera. And um I would just like them to be invited to come to opportunities to see or read or at least make a comment now and then a sanity check for us.
I, oh, I I just, I would, to me, before we engage some of the important public stakeholders, I would like to see, ask Klein Schmidt if we have new data, new LIDAR or new imagery that they could use to just make sure those alternatives still stand. And then we could do some ground truthing with people who know the area, like the gentleman that came. And there's another one that's in charge of Five Mile Dam sort of.
Yeah.
And then start reaching out to landowners that would be affected by those different alternatives. But I'd like to see if, based on what we saw in a hundred year flood event, if that alternative six and eight and one are still the most bang for your buck.
Possible.
Yeah.
Um, and I made during the last C Act, Southeast Area Commission on Transportation, I made a request for elevation drawings, schematics, whatever, the blueprints, whatever you want to call them, for Highway twenty from what they did in two thousand and eleven, I think, the construction work that was done in two thousand and eleven um of the existing uh structures that were in the roadway, you know, whether those were um cattle underpasses. I mean, they were big enough to to move cattle under, I know that. But but I'd like to see what was there previous and what's there now. And I have not received those yet, so I'm not going to have to put that bug in their ear again. They they sent me some other information that I asked, that I told them, I said, this is not what I asked for. So I um I'm pretty sure that uh as everything is engineered anymore, then I'm sure that somewhere they have those diagrams. But anyways, I I'm working on that and I think that will be good for consideration and inclusion into into this review. Brandon, thank you. Um, we uh basically Commissioner Frank and I mentioned that we spoke to you earlier about reengaging Klein Schmidt. I think that's a good thing. Um, so beyond that, any any input, any update, any uh?
Yeah, I I don't have much more. Uh, what's been discussed so far is pretty on point with some of the candid conversations we've had about uh moving the ball on this, on this work. You know, that uh implementing and ultimately putting physical changes to the landscape based on the alternatives in the report would would cost money and resources. Um, and so prior to getting there, you've got some planning elements that need to go into that need to be implemented uh for the project to get off the ground the right way, the educated way uh and with the proper input. And uh, I agree, I I I would uh suggest that uh the engineers who worked at the county to put that report together be reengaged, at at least initially, to to grab some suggestions about where do we go? You know, how do we, how do we move this project or these potential projects ahead? And and have some suggestions, you could maybe even look to fund some additional work from them based on on their work putting that together, you know, uh. We uh former commissioner, but now Representative Mark Owens, worked uh uh quite a bit on this project when it first started. And uh I I I may have gotten here a little late, but you know, there has been some legislature has approved some funding that can help move these projects forward a little bit, so that's exciting. Uh, the the aim of the the two of uh uh of the goals uh for the project initially were to move flood inundation levels that were projected from the Silvies drainage away from our populated areas, away from from the tribe, away from burns. You know, a lot of your flood inundation in Heinz is going to come from the the drainage above the hills. But facilities is your main culprit for burns, something only one, but it's the significant one. And if we can move, reconvey some of that water to areas where folks can actually use it and even get some groundwater recharge element added. Uh, that was another major, major goal of the project. Uh, those were taken into account when the development of those alternatives were put put in paper. So um exciting stuff. We got to a really good place and then the next step uh was put on hold until we could find some funding. And so here we are, exciting times potentially, and uh let's make sure we get this thing off the ground in a measured and calculated way.
We probably need to wait until we've got that check deposited before we reach out to them. Or is it worth kicking the tires and see if they would even be interested before we got the funding? Just to see if they'd be willing to take that project home. I was asking you, Judge Hart, but.
Um, I I would say probably it would be worth at least a preliminary phone call to let them know, hey, we we've tentatively been awarded some funds and we'd like to reopen this. Um.
Gauge some interest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not going to cost us anything.
Yeah, I if if I can uh make a phone call or or two to the folks who are uh the engineer or the project manager on on the board, uh I I could certainly um drum up that conversation a little bit and say, hey, I I know that following their work on this, they were really excited about the outcomes, uh potential outcomes especially. But but in fact, I uh I could be off on this, but I I guess they may have won or or earned some some credit in their realm, their flood engineer realm of the work they did on this. So they're really proud of the work. I imagine that the interest is there to continue to work on with them as well, so. I imagine that the interest is there to continue to work on with them as well, so.
And you have a relationship and contact with them, so you'll reach out and see if that's something they need to take on.
It's been a little bit of time, but yes, I do.
Thanks.
I think it's a. A work in progress, I think it's something that we should probably. Keep as a continuing item on our agenda, um, at least monthly. At least the old business monthly to re, to readdress or re, and see where we're at. And keep it alive so that it doesn't get lost or buried.
Agreed.
So let's, um. Well, we're in the second meeting of the month, so let's just keep it second meeting of the month as a standing item under old business.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Can I add, I believe OEM was working on possibly having like an in-person meeting to discuss recovery and mitigation next month.
Okay.
So just so that's under this awareness, they don't know when and what their plan is, but I did see something. About that, we have a meeting tomorrow, which I think, I'm sure Frank's gonna attend, she'll be cooking, um, with OEM and. Discussing recoveries, so I think we'll discuss the next month's meeting, but. Would probably be a, a good person to have that as well.
The public again?
Yeah. Uh, I, I think really at this point, in this, on this incident, this issue, it's an all hands on deck thing. Um, we may call other people who normally might not even be involved in something like this, so, um. It's important, it's important for the future of our community. Economically, personally, you know, privately, whatever, so. It's something that we have the opportunity, we have these funds, we've gotta move on. The priority. Anything else? Either one of you? I was gonna ask you next if you had any input or ideas or anything.
So it can't write down.
Okay.
You can report out, I'll leave him that.
All right, uh, moving on then, new business. Thank you, Brandon. Ambulance service agreement, um. I apologize, I was going to pull the latest agreement and it skipped me before the meeting. We have redone it, uh, last year, and I was gonna pull it to see if it was a two-year agreement or if it was an annual agreement, I don't remember. Uh, but we, I do recall doing it, we, last year.
Did, did OHA approve that one? Because some people were under the impression that even though we had a two thousand and twenty-three version, it hadn't been approved by OHA. And so the one we were, that has been approved by OHA was way outdated.
Um, I will have to look into it because I didn't know that OHA needed to approve of that.
There was an email chain last year when Kyle was the interim. And then I believe that that was gonna get passed to the new EMS director who has since left the hospital, so. I think they're now without an EMS director again. But there was a piece of it that they wanted them to amend in that contract, and I don't know what happened with that, but I was so.
Was that?
Chain of emails for some of those.
Is that in their ballpark to, to do the approval by OHA then?
I believe so, I believe it's their responsibility once it's gotten that level, and then OHA wanted them to make a couple of changes. I don't know what happened out of that, so.
Yeah. That's why I wouldn't have been aware that they needed to do it if it was their responsibility.
That's why I add, cuz that stuff is way outside my wheelhouse and the MSAC committee. Do you, have you started on that?
What, what does that stand for? I'm not familiar with that.
I don't know exactly what it stands for, but it's supposed to be a committee that has representatives from the county government, the city governments, the hospital, emergency services. That irons out.
No, I've never been.
Agreements for the ambulance service agreement and.
No, the occasional contract that would, or agreement that would come before the county court. In the years I've been on, or something that the county judge put on the agenda, and I had nothing to do with it. Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna say it's probably due because I wanna, I remember doing it when I first took office in twenty-three. And then I remember doing it again last year, so if it's, if I've done it twenty-three and twenty-four, it's probably due for twenty-five. Um, and that's why I was gonna pull it to see what the term of it is, but I, it skipped me, so I'm gonna say it's probably due. But then, I wonder. It's kind of a, it also has a kind of a commercial element to it, because if there were other, I mean, in Harney County, we have one, one provider. So it's pretty open and shut. But whereas when you have other, in other mu- uh, municipalities where you might have multiple. Uh, EMS entities.
Yeah.
Then I think it, it gets more into a bidding and a, and a. RFP process maybe even, I don't, I don't know, um. It's pretty straightforward for Harney County though, because we have just the one provider. But if that's being the case, I wonder if we need to do this every year or if it could be pushed to. Every two-year process, things are not gonna change.
Uh, the last one that I have was for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so I remember doing it last year, so I wonder if it never got finalized and back to us, and that's why we don't have a copy. Thank you.
While we still had.
Can you send that to the printer or something, just so we have it and I can look at it and do that?
While we still had an EMS director, he brought to my attention that according to OHA, the last approved ASA plan is from nineteen ninety. We have a twenty twenty-two and a twenty twenty-three version, but it hasn't been approved by OHA. And I can't remember what the heck that MSAC stands for, but it's something that we should have a seat on with HDH.
You know, there has.
I'd never heard of it.
We have not been, I mean, there've been a few things, but for the most part, I don't think we're, we're very involved with HDH. On a lot of matters, I mean.
Medical Services Advisory Committee.
There you go.
I haven't heard anything about it, so.
Are the cities on it?
I, I don't think it has the representation that it's supposed to have, over time, it has dwindled.
Okay.
And some of the, like, the fire departments and. Police departments would like to have representation on it, I, I guess it's kind of atypical that our emergency cert- our EMS is run through the hospital instead of through. The fire department.
Oh, I didn't know.
I didn't know that either.
Or sometimes they're independent, it's an independent contract, you know, Baker County deals with, uh.
Um, it used to be, the ambulance, our ambulance service program used to be through the, through the city of Burns, didn't it, through, through fire department? Years ago?
I think, I think so.
Years ago, in the nineties.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just kind of a table item, I guess, for now until we, um, till I can dig into it and find out where we're at, what we need to do with it.
One is also asked by the hospital to look for an MOU. That apparently their emergency operations plan states that like if their generator goes out and they run out of fuel, so like if we're in a fuel crisis, there's something major going on here. They have an MOU with emergency management to refill that. And I can't find anything, so they can't find anything, but that is written in there, like, okay, that's a little concerning.
Have you checked our laser?
Yeah, we come up with nothing.
And you say the hospital and stuff with nothing also?
Yeah, they have no documentation of it, it's just written in their VOPs, I don't know if there was, I'm like, I think maybe there was a discussion about it, but I don't know that it was actually over. All three were on, so, but that seems like a conversation I also need to have with local, like, that's all the sons and stuff.
Is, is there not, though, just seems like here in the past six months or so. That kind of along the line, that, those lines, that topic has come up about. Uh, fuel security and, and ensuring that. Public entities, public safety entities, whatnot, have availability of fuel, should there become a, a crisis or something?
So there should be an annex for fuel in our EOP, there is not, um. I have kind of started working on it, but I can see where it's been sort of like worked on, but nobody ever actually followed through with it. And I don't know with all the effort, the data that I have is from, I think when Paul Curry was emergency manager. And he has all of the places where they have fuel, like if it's above ground, you know, all of those things, but I don't know what discussions were actually had with those facilities of like, hey. If we have a disaster and that we need fuel, like these entities are gonna be served first, and so that's something we definitely need to establish. Um, but I can't find documentation where those conversations took place and there was an agreement made. But I have seen, I believe, um, the state has a fuel plan, and I think that information was given to the state on behalf of Harney County. So I need to verify that, but I think that that's where that went. But I don't know that those agreements were actually made here, I don't know, cuz I don't have a contract or an MOU or any kind of documentation, so.
Okay. Anything else on the ambulance service agreement? I will, like I said, I will dig into it and find out what I can. Find on, have, have you heard from the hospital and, and do they have an interim? Um, EMS supervisor?
Ask, I don't believe so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think Patrick Blue is still, no, not EMS, sorry, he's still in the, the Prairie Looms, sorry. No, I don't, I don't believe so, if they do, I haven't heard of it yet.
Okay. Uh, next topic, drought declaration discussion. Um, from. From the letter that you sent out in the map that showed what current, what status we're in currently this year versus last year and whatnot, I mean, obviously we're starting to climb up. The ladder on severity. Um, so I wanted to know what. Um, what are the pros and cons if we declare now? If we don't declare now and wait for it to see what it progresses to, if it gets any worse? Um, I guess my first question is the status or the condition that we're currently in, do we qualify?
Yes.
To declare?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, and if you look at the entire state's in some sort of state of drought, so at some point there may be a state declaration for the whole state, I don't know. That's kind of what we anticipate. Um, I could not find any cons, and I've talked to the tax successor too, just to make sure I'm not missing anything, called Water Master, he's a hundred percent on board right now with us. Doing a drought declaration, it opens up programs for our ranchers, um, emergency loans, disaster payments, insurance adjustments. Um, some regulatory flexibility with that, with the water use flexibility and livestock movement. They can waive some of the environmental restrictions for moving cattle. Or livestock, um, they get resources like feed assistance, technical assistance and tax relief. Um, so speaking to the tax successor, she would prefer that we do this as early as possible because we declared so late last year, she'd already, they'd already sent out. Bills and then had to go backwards and redo a bunch of stuff, it costs, you know, a week's worth of work.
So that would be a con.
That is a con. So the pro is doing it early so that they already have everything in order before they send out tax information to people. Um, and then it just kind of helps document too, just as, as a proactive risk management for our natural hazard mitigation plan, it's like. Here, look at how many years we've had to declare a drought in Harney County. And that helps with grants and all the other things mitigation work that we'll eventually be doing, so.
I will say that I think if I recall from your map there in comparison to last year, we're not as far along this year as we were last year at this time, is that correct?
Last year at this.
We were deeper into.
Declare until October. Because most of the county was white, like, we weren't really in a drought until about October.
So it was the other way around, we're further along this year?
Much, it's much earlier, and it's not anticipated to get better, we're gonna have higher temperatures and. Above average temperatures moving forward, so.
But according to the US Drought Monitor, we're not in a drought yet, so that's why I'm a little hesitant to be declaring a drought. And some of the statements in that letter, like about feed, there's more feed than people can use, people are having a hard time finding things to use feed right now.
I just updated last year, so we may have to change some of it, it's just a like, here's what we use and can change whatever's in it, um. But like this part of, the northern part of Harney County is in a drought. And you can't do a drought declaration for the count, like part of the county, it's all there or nothing. And we were just recently yellow here, and now the whole county's yellow and this tan is starting to green, so. It's, I've just been watching it, and we can wait until we move into a, a deeper drought and just. Puts all of the ranch programs getting, you know, they can benefit from them, they don't get access to those. Now, too.
And all of those programs you're referencing are federal programs?
They're USDA.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Livestock Forge Disaster Program, CRP, there's a whole bunch of different things that they can qualify for and use. Um, and I know Baker, Baker has their drought declaration already, Morrow and, and Willawa just submitted theirs, so they're in process. And it usually kind of trickles down, like everybody starts to declare drought on the sides, so. And it does take a little bit of time in turn with the turnaround time, but I think it was almost a month before we got that state, the declaration from the governor last night. That's something to consider as well.
How about our neighbors? Have they declared?
Not yet. Usually.
Shall we put it on the next agenda, action?
Yeah, we'll have two more weeks at that point to look and see, you know, where the map is changing, so.
I, I.
For potential action. Yeah, and, and we'll have a resolution ready, and should we decide to?
Yeah.
At that time.
And, um. Melinda, that letter's, looks fine to me, but just make sure that when the time comes, there's a date, and then where we sign, it'll say, signed on this date. Of course.
So. Trying to remember last year. And I don't remember the verbiage in the letter, we did the letter before the resolution? Or the resolution and then the letter? I mean, tech, technically we'll do them at the same time, but.
I think you have to do the resolution first because you have to put the resolution into the letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move that forward. Um, next topic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Are, are you gonna be, um, around this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, I need to give you a call later on.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, drought declaration discussion, next topic is economic development, current contract and future planning. So, um. After it was. Um, expressed to have a discussion on our, and, and reevaluate our economic development, uh. Direction and where we wanted to go with it, I let our current contractor know. And that, uh, while we don't have a current contract, we're basically working off the previous contract, um. Um, just year after year with that, um, that, uh. We would be having this meeting and work session, and that, uh, out of that, we would probably be, uh. Sending him a letter with thirty day notice, letting him know that, that we were gonna terminate our, our agreement. Until we determined what approach we wanna take for our future economic development needs, um. Out of that, the following, very following day, I received an email from Mr. Smith saying that he is terminating his. As effective thirty days, August tenth, I think it is. Um, um, and that's in correspondence in, in the packet, that he is terminating his, uh, relationship with us, so. For whatever reason, that, you know, um. He beat me to the punch, so to speak.
The preemptive breakout.
Yeah, um, in good terms though. You know, I, I have to say that, that Greg has been responsive to anything I've asked him to do. I am gonna ask him that in the next thirty days that he help us finish up with the RFP process for the jail. And the, and the selection of the contractor, and I'd also need to get on the agendas of both Burns and Heinz City Councils. And address the, uh, enterprise zone with them, um, it, it's kind of been left in their lap bec- cuz they have to do a, a resolution. Before we can do our resolution, and if they're not gonna be interested in doing it, then we can continue on with it, but carve out Burns and Heinz, just have. Outside of, of those municipalities. Uh, to kind of get in. Um. I still like to proceed with that, whether they're, whether they're gonna partake and, and wanna be able to market their municipalities. Is having that tool, that tax, uh, deferral tool. You know, if the cities are, are, for whatever reason, afraid of losing revenue, tax-based revenue, and they don't wanna get involved in it. Um, the argument is that if we don't have it today, you're not gonna miss it tomorrow. And it's only, it's only a three to five year deferral anyway, so then after that, you start getting it, and if it's a tool that we can attract, you, you know, business and, and. And development, um, I'd rather have it three years down the road than not have it at all three years down the road. And I was actually in a, kind of an informal conversation yesterday with an individual that, that expressed. Interest in. Uh, investing in Harney County, uh, just very, very preliminary, it's nothing. You know, I don't even wanna say who or what it was, but I'm just saying that it's potentially out there, and having that tool. Could put us over the edge or over the top of being able to secure that kind of development. So, uh, I want him to continue, I need to make those appointments or those agenda, get on the agenda for both municipalities. And put it before them, and I want him to help. Potentially steer that to a conclusion. By time he's done. So, you know, bringing that back around to my. You know, bringing that back around to Mr. Smith and his. Resignation, so to speak. Um, on that topic. Um, and it's been kind of expressed already, but, uh, a work session, I think we need to do a work session. Um, Commissioner Doro has expressed that the desire to do that as well. So I think a work session and in that work session, I would like to invite. Uh, Business Oregon, maybe Biz Harney. Uh, GE ODC. And other economic development, anybody else who can think of economic development, uh, professionals. That might come and speak or, or advise on what they think is, that would be the best approach or direction for Harney County to take and use its economic development dollars. In, in which direction? So that would be my. My recommendation forward on that topic.
So a work session with invited entities who may want to educate us on things that are available, uh, and then. From that work session, we would later have another work session on RFP, developing a request for proposal.
Would, yeah.
Type of thing? Is that, is that how you see it?
If we're going to go, well, if we're going to go out to another economic development contractor, my concern is that. GE ODC has, has financing options available. So I really don't want to, I don't want to engage in an, an economic development contractor to do financing. It's a duplication of efforts.
Right.
Um, now that doesn't mean that they couldn't advise and say they have a, uh, that they know of a potential route that a person could do, but. Or they could go to define financing, but I don't really want them to be our financier, our, our future contractor.
I mean, we'll, we'll get into it more, but at the moment I, what we, what I missed was that local presence. You know, a person, a person who then can be the one. Who gets real smart and is really in touch with these other entities that we'll learn more about. And what they offer, and even if should we ever want to subcontract with a grant writing service for a certain amount, they would help. Manage funnel, work with the city, work with everybody to see what kind of things and, and, and push them as part of what we do, but. I agree, um, but by having all these folks, they're just going to tell us about stuff that's out there, uh, in our work session. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, GE ODC can, can talk about what they provide, what they can bring to the table. They themselves, that we don't need to ask our contractor to do. It wouldn't be in the, it wouldn't be in the statement of work to ask them to do what GE ODC does. Um, Biz Oregon, um, would maybe, you know. Advise on what they think we should be asking our economic development contractor to do. Um, you know, and any other entity that we might invite along with that Biz Harney, you know, um. Same way. I, again, I don't want to duplicate with a contractor services that are already out there that we don't have to pay for.
And also if, um, if Holly could dig out our. Most recent, um, economic development contract with the contractor who's, we have until August tenth. Um, what happened was. Um. We hadn't contracted or changed anything in a long time. The community wanted more, wanted change. We decided let's. Let's put out requests for proposals, you know, let's have some general idea of what, what it is we're talking about that we want at that time. We did, we had. The cities and the county, um, be part of a panel to. Interview or hear the presentations of the entities that submitted proposals and, um. And then ultimately though, it was a county court decision on, on who goes select. Um, since we're going to be paying the bills and we're going to be, you know, the ones that we've worked for on behalf of, you know, the whole county. And, um, that just hadn't ever been done before, I don't think. And, um. Even though it's been a number of years now, um, I think it was a good process to. I mean, I, I don't want to make stuff drag out, but I think that having a good process, once we know what direction. We want to move in a little bit.
I, I, um, disagree with it, uh, a physical presence. Um, I think if we have an, an economic development contractor that's wherever in the state. Um, you know, they can be contacted via phone, email, whatever. We can have, you know, flyers, pamphlets, whatever to give out. At the Chamber of Commerce, wherever that people can then call our economic development contractor and find out what assistance or guidance they can get. You know, another duplication that I, that I could think of off the top of my head that I don't want our contractor to do is the chamber does, uh, the starter program. Where they, where they help people develop a business plan and they, you know, how to, how to budget and everything else. There's that starter program that they do. Um, we don't need to then have a contractor that, that's helping people to figure out how to do that. That's already being provided in our community.
Yeah, it'd be good to look at what, what's. What exists, even if people didn't realize it existed, or if it, it needs to.
Grant writing services can be, can be put in our RFP from a contractor, um, you know. Theoretically, if they do enough grant writing, they could pay themselves through administrative and, and adminis. Administrative costs from writing the grant to administering the grant. Um, administering grants is very time consuming and it's not just a matter of writing them, but once you get them, then you have to administer them.
Well, not having someone. In the community, um. Is not ideal, but I mean, if, if, if it can all be done well and the contractor is not here a lot, they'll certainly have to come sometimes, um. If they're really on top of. The webpage, the, you know, social media and, and I mean, if they're really on top and returning phone calls, answering their phone. And then, um, coming here as soon as there's an entity, including a local entity that needs help and they'll say. Okay, how about next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, and doing that personal touch. Again, if it's not one of those things that already exists.
But personal touch for, for what?
Helping advise them on how to, um. Grow their business, strengthen their, their financial position or expand or whatever. I don't know. I just know. Um, I mean, it's all part of economic development, including the ever, the ever.
But our current.
Desire recruitment of, of employers. Well.
I mean, really, all they focused on was financing.
For not managing them as we needed. Now, one of the things with our, our current contractor and was said right up front. You know. I'm a legislator. I'm gone five months, six months out of the year, every other year. Is that something you can live with? I do have staff, but you know, I would not be easily accessible during those months. I mean, that was all put up there at the time. And we had, we had some, um. We had some very different, um, responses, proposals submitted, so it was an interesting. But, um, we can discuss all this at a work session, but I just. Another thing just keep in mind is when Greg Smith and company became our contractor, he may have a lot of ownership of. The logo and stuff that he, his company did for Harney County. Which again, if, if so, and, and it doesn't transfer to us, uh, at no cost, um, then. That's just something out there just to be aware of. I remember that his company functioned in a very deliberative manner. In creating the Harney County Economic Development logo and things, so. We need to find out what, what transfers to us and what doesn't.
I, if, if it was paid for with county dollars, I would say it belongs to the county.
Which is that conversation, but, um. But you question Frankie?
I look forward to work session. I think we need to first and foremost identify what our vision is for economic development, what we want to do. And I don't think we should dilly-dally around. But I also think we, we want to be thorough and it might take some time to identify that. So I, I am really looking forward to the work session, getting that ball.
And we don't have to use the amount we've always put toward economic development monthly, all in one paycheck. To one entity. We, in our work session, we can, we can figure out what levels of, of, um. Professional support we want. And if it doesn't use all of it up, then we've got some left for when we do need to. Do something.
Um, I, I agree with one caveat. I don't want to see those funds get a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit here, a little bit there. Because fragmented like that, we won't see any return.
Right, but it would be nice to. Not have it all go out unless, unless we're getting, getting what we want. You know, if we're getting the service we want, that's good.
So I'm going to get in touch with, uh, our local Biz Oregon. Representative and GE ODC and find out what their availability is and, um. And try to set a work session date based on that. Is there any hard dates or things, obligations that either of you have coming up that?
That last week in July is not good for me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect it to be this, they'd probably be the first of next month.
Um.
So you, it wouldn't be till August, truthfully?
Probably.
Seventh and eighth are open for me at the moment and then. The next couple of weeks are pretty good.
I've got stuff all the time, but I'll be in the county.
My August Thursdays and Fridays are pretty wide open at this point right now.
Yeah, me too. Those are pretty good days. How about you?
It just depends on which ones they are. Throw one out that you're liking.
Seventh, eighth, fourteenth, fifteenth. If you want to get right on it.
Again, I'm, I mean, it's going to be tentative at this point until I can.
Right.
Secure those other outside entities.
Fourteenth would be a good one.
Tentatively on the fourteenth?
How much time are you thinking?
Um, probably a couple of hours at least, at, at, at least. Um, at this point, we're kind of in a, we don't know what we don't know phase. So out of these discussions, we'll develop questions for things that we really don't know. Um. A, and define maybe. You know, again, kind of like what we did with our strategic planning that we did, it's, it's going to be a matter of brainstorming as what, what we want, what we think we would want. What we could get, um, myself, I, I want some, some, an entity that's more proactive in bringing us ideas. Um, you know, I, you know, Mr. Smith was, was very responsive to when I would bring a, an idea to him. You know, we, we, we tried to solicit a shoe store. We tried to solicit a pharmacy. Um, I tried to solicit, we did a paper and everything to harbor freight tools, which we need to follow up with them because they were in limbo, not knowing what was going on with the tariffs and everything. Um.
And earlier on, they did the strategic planning, uh, before you were in office, um. And that was back when the CRT, Community Response Dean, was a, a regularly monthly meeting that became quite energized. Broke into subcommittees, the housing subcommittee. This was a community driven though, where, where the interest and the energy would be. You know, everyone was saying we need housing, we need housing and, and that one house did get built. But there was a lot, we did the workforce, uh, housing roadmap, things like that when we were focused on, on the housing stuff. Um, but again, it's like you say, um. We don't have all the ideas. Maybe, maybe they.
Well, somebody who's, somebody who's, who's. Everyday job is economic development and attends. Chamber of Commerce meetings, you know, state level check, whatever, and it has a, has a finger on the pulse of development within the state of Oregon. And maybe even the outside of the state of Oregon for companies and industries that are looking to expand or move. Um, and Harney County. With them representing us, um. Example, this is all hypothetical, but, uh, with them representing us would say, hey, this looks like it would be a good fit for Harney County. You know, and then bring the idea to Harney County and say, would you like us to pursue this or what would be the next step?
We had a, there was an economic development contractor for the county way before I was, you know, upon the court that. Uh, can kind of picture the guy and he would, he was on contract, but I think he lived in Idaho, but he. You know, he'd come every month, but he was doing supposedly doing a lot of the. The recruitment or attempts at recruitment and worked closely with the county judge on, on a lot of things. I don't know if people are pleased with that or not, but, um. Yeah, we don't have to. But do you? Okay.
I have misgivings over prioritizing, bringing in, expanding businesses from outside the area over strengthening the ones that we have, so. I'll, I'll be interested to hear.
Biz Oregon. We need, we need industry. We have no industry in Harney County. Outside of the ag industry.
We don't have any workforce to fill it though.
We don't. And, but the individual I was informally speaking with yesterday, I asked that question to him. I said, so. Uh, what, we don't have a workforce. What, they'll come. I mean, that was his, his experience and, and I'm like, yeah. You know, I'd wait to see that, but.
Does he have experience in a such a remote place?
Yes.
All right. Cause I don't know if they'll come either.
Yeah, for that, I don't know if it's more appropriate for that work session or one of the following ones, but maybe the, does the chamber have a president? Or a chair?
Probably, yeah, I think so.
To get perspective on what local businesses think.
The, the. The, the main street business is equally as important as. As the thirty employee employer is or industry, whatever that might be. I mean, um. I, I take nothing away from, from those entrepreneurs that are doing that. But our community cannot sustain solely on. That. That small, personal, small business. You know?
We were trying to seek out at one point employers who might employ ten to fifteen. Because we didn't have the housing to support, you know, a huge influx of, you know, and our local workforce. From what we were told, we're a big potential workforce. Many were not, um, eligible due to. Not passing drug tests and not being motivated to do so, et cetera. So, um, but. When that. One entity in Heinz that was, they kind of know stuff, you know, that was hopeful at one point and we, we always try. We always try to help support and. It's just, it's a big, it's tough one.
Yeah. Um, my vision would be. Ten. Ten employee businesses. Or ten, if, ten, fifteen, twenty employee businesses. If one of those businesses goes out, it's easier for the other ones to absorb. To absorb some of that, uh, labor that's now displaced. Um. Ideally, I, you know, even a fifty employee employer, single employer that employs fifty people is great. But it's kind of like putting your eggs all in one basket, um. But hopefully from a fifty employee employer, you're going to have a lot of offshoot stuff too that comes up that, that starts employing. One and two and three and five people. Um. So, so there's different ways of looking at it, but, but I definitely. I definitely think the securist route is a diversification. In our. Economic development. So, all right, I will reach out to those individuals and see what we can schedule for the fourteenth then. Um. Correspondence, um, to see the couple of letters. Out here National Forest. Uh, South Zone enters public, um, enters public use restrictions. So again, just, um. Get the word out there, the fire restrictions are in place in, uh. In the Mount Here Forest South Zone, which is the Immigrant Creek. Ranger District. Prairie City just, uh, the north end. Yeah, Blue Mountain will remain at fire danger rating level high with no public use restrictions. So Immigrant Creek Ranger District will implement Phase B of public use restrictions. Uh, which include. Uh, prohibited acts or building, maintaining, attending or using a fire, campfire, charcoal, briquette or stove. Or stove fire except within a designated recreation site. And, uh, smoking except within an enclosed vehicle prohibited. Operating a chainsaw between the hours of one P M, eight P M. Then they have to have fire watch. In place. Operator using any internal or external combustion engine without a spark arrestor device properly installed. And possessor used vehicle off. National Forest System roads. So just like I said, to get the word out there on that. So just, like I said, get the word out there on that. Other correspondence, the uh email from Mr. Smith. And then. Any other correspondence that y'all would like to introduce?
Did you talk about the correspondence from B L M?
Um, do I have it on here?
That is.
I don't see it on here.
I think it was in the packet, but it's not on the agenda.
Okay, so it didn't, but this is uh in regards to um. Uh Wild Horse and Borough. Gather. On Riddle Mountain H M A, herd management area. They have um. Schedule to begin July of twenty twenty five and August of twenty twenty five. In the Kiger and Riddle Mountain H M As. However, due to legal proceedings, the B L M has uh canceled the scheduled gathers of the Kiger and Riddle Mountain H M As to allow adequate consideration. Of the issues raised by the parties. If these gathers are are again placed on the national schedule. Uh interested members of the public will receive additional notification, so just a notification that uh those gathers have been canceled. That's all I have for correspondence, any other? And then scheduling, we kinda covered that, that was for the. To develop an R F P for the economic development, is that correct? So would you have that? Um, another, another R F P though that I would like to look at um. Discussing would be um an R F P for a web. Uh host, web designer, web uh admin. Whatever that looks like. Our current contract, we pay about ten thousand, well, we don't pay about, we pay ten thousand dollars a year for the contract. And then on top of that, it includes our certification fees. And other, other domain fees and whatnot that come along with it. Um, I know. One entity that just recently went out for an R F P and got it at about five thousand dollars. I don't know what their criteria and what their service and their statement of work actually was. I can get some examples or an example of one, just to look at it, but I would really like to uh. Look at. An alternative. To what we're currently doing.
Were you the judge the last time? There was. Consideration of that or was it the previous judge?
Of our current web host designer, that was before me.
Uh, it wasn't that many years ago, but it was. Few years ago. Um, and uh key department heads. Were involved on on what's needed and this and that, and I don't know if that meant our webmaster. Made changes or if we switched to something back then, I don't recall. But none of you guys were here at that time, but yet again. A long time, it it wasn't that many years ago.
The new website was finished and implemented in spring of twenty three after I took office. But all that was in process before I took office.
Well. Can always look into it, no problem.
Those currently right now, that service is paid for out of the, out of the lottery economic, economic development funds as well.
Is there any place else we could or would pay for it out of?
I mean, I could, we could move it to general fund just out of contract. You know, or I T services or contracts or whatever, but it's gonna, you know, it's gonna. It's gonna, general fund is the only other place.
It almost seems like a general fund item to me, but.
I I tossed around the idea that just like we charge each department for I T. We break down our, the I T cost by department based on the number of computers that they have. And phone lines and all those other funds are are broken down. Um, I would probably look at doing the same thing by department, that each department, which would then spread it out across different funds as well, not just. Not just the general fund, cause they're, you know, health department, home health. Building, road department, you know, they're their own, all their own funds, so that would help disperse the the. The uh, the load for those services across those different funds. Um, but identify basically those departments that have elements on the website. Or need, you know, have a desire or need to maintain. Something on the website for public information. Then spread that cost out over amongst all the different departments.
Sounds like. Something to consider.
But that would free up. You know, another ten, twelve thousand dollars of those economic development funds for something else too.
I don't know if economic development funds should ever be at. On occasion as appropriate utilized for match funding. When we're trying to do something related to economic development and we have nowhere else to find the match money. If we had, where we weren't spending it all, you know, all toward one contractor or something.
I'll have to.
I don't know.
I'll have to check the resolution on that fund and see if there's, what the specific language is for for its use. For its authorization.
Yeah, that'd be good to know.
Obviously before we ever spend those funds on anything. Meeting schedule, meetings are, we're on track for our normal first and. First and third Wednesday of the month. August, what is that, sixth?
Sixth and twenty.
Sixth and twentieth, I believe on August sixth, um Representative Owens. Has has tentatively um. Said he might, he'll be here, depending on what his schedule looks like if something comes up. Any other meetings or schedules to know? We do have this, what, next, next Thursday, Friday night, the twenty fourth is the fifth meeting at the Memorial Building. The what meeting? The, well, the the Blue Mountain Inner Forest Plan meeting.
It's, it's a Forest Service public hearing, so right, it's not a big meeting, okay.
Yeah, not, but.
And which, which location is it?
Memorial Building. Five o'clock, five to eight, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Anything else? Oh, yes, tomorrow afternoon is a summer. Employee appreciation gathering at the Heinz Park. Uh with gazebo, Heinz Park gazebo. So everybody that's online, please uh. Split away, split your staff away tomorrow afternoon, come have a hamburger, socialize.
Which park?
The Heinz Park, you know, behind the city hall where the gazebo is.
Yeah.
Next to, next to the gas station there.
Man, I would've shown up to the wrong place, I don't know what office.
Anything else?
The Eastern Oregon Counties Association Annual Meeting is on the twenty third. Yeah, Hamilton, I think.
Yes.
I didn't know if anybody was attending that.
I won't be, I let them know, but.
I think there's supposed to be a C C P meeting on the twenty third as well for the Mount Here Refuge.
And I think it'll be out in the field. Bring, bring your, bring your lunch and water and we'll get to. Walk around.
And. The. August fourth and fifth are the last Oregon Water Resource Department public hearings in regards to the RAC five twelve process. And I think the one on the fourth is in Seneca and the one on, there are two on the fifth. In Harney County, one of them is at the Chamber and I think that's the one in the evening. So ten A M is one at the Harney County Community Center. And the other one is from five to seven, I thought that was at the community center as well.
And there's, there's one new uh additional meeting that is uh not. Being convened by O W R D per se, and that is this July twenty second. It'll be. Co-sponsored, I think, by the Harney County. Farm Bureau and the Stock Growers and Representative Owens will be there to. Help lead the discussion for the community about what all this groundwater rule makings weren't mean to you. And Harmony will be there, et cetera, so that's another event that I think I just saw this morning on my email. So um.
I have a, I was gonna ask, so uh in another conversation, uh the developer for um. Palmer Estates, the housing development uh behind the big R. Uh the property back in to the east behind the big R. Was stopped in to visit the other day and I mentioned to him about the proposed or the potential for the reduction in water. For burns and Heinz. Um, they hadn't heard anything about that and asked if, is there, is there actual proposal or? Or anything of percentages on cutback for the municipalities?
Yes, uh it's, it's in the RAC five twelve plans and it is. Their allotment would be one hundred and ten percent. Of their highest usage in, I wanna say the last six years, it's not five, I think it's six years, might be five. It would be a hundred and ten percent of their highest usage in that timeframe. And it would, it would be rolling, so if. If this current year was their highest usage they'd ever had and they use a hundred and ten percent of their previous high. Then next year, it would be a hundred and ten percent of what they used the year before.
So is that gonna continue to roll even through the, through the? Implementation of the rules that that if, if their usage continues to grow each year, then their allotment would continue to grow, it's not gonna get capped.
Correct.
Okay. And 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 that was usage during the past. What, what is?
The last six years, I think, is what it's based on.
Do you have that by chance? Is it?
It's on the O W R D.
Yeah, it would be on their website.
Division five twelve page, there's just, there's. You know, slides and.
Okay.
I'll dump like that.
I'll look forward to, I mean, as a developer, they're obviously. Very concerned about availability of water and. Every house you put in uses more water, pro- produces more sewage and everything else, so.
How many houses is that development looking to put in?
It spans between burdens and Heinz. Full development. I I wanna say. I'll have to ask him again, but but at least at a hundred and fifty or more homes. I wanna say maybe it was even close to two hundred, but.
That's my recollection as well.
Yeah, somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred, I don't remember the exact number. Um, Miller Springs, I think, was also estimated around a hundred and fifty homes.
I'm very concerned, I'll leave it to the market.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously you can't, no, no builder is gonna go out and build. Fifty homes without a market because they're just gonna sit there, you know, so has the demand.
It has happened.
Well, I know it has, but you end up with a supply and demand and an inventory that they can't.
And that's when the problem's.
Yeah. But. I I think there's somewhat of a market for people that would relocate that can work remotely. It would be somewhat of a market for people to relocate from. Places like Deschutes County where the median home income or household cost is seven hundred thousand dollars. And they can sell off there and come someplace like this and pay three hundred or three hundred fifty thousand and bank the rest of it for their retirement. Um, so there's a market for some of that. Not saying that's the entire thing, but there would be, I think there would be a few of those, um there'd be a few of the remote workers. And that all helps bring money into our economy for secondary small business type growth and whatnot. But it doesn't provide anything in the way of salaries as well, other than residual in those businesses. But anyway, obviously as a developer there, when I mentioned that to him, he was definitely concerned. So I wanted to get into the accurate information on it. Meeting schedule, regular court dates, court updates, Commissioner Dorrell?
Um, just two things, one is our solar permitting fees. Are our solar permitting fees in line with other counties? Or are we still way low?
I currently have directed uh. Planning Director McMullin to research that. He is supposed to be working on a report and reviewing our fees versus neighboring fees and making sure we're in line with what other. Counties are charging.
Did you give him sort of a timeframe or where he?
I haven't.
Would you, would you please, cause uh I'd like, that's been, it's been over a year.
Yeah, it's just been within, I don't know, two weeks ago that I gave him that.
I don't see without more information that I'm, I'm not aware of. I don't see any reason why our permitting fees for solar could be. Astronomically lower than any place else. We're not desperate and it hurts us. It's part, the cost of doing business for solar.
Yes.
Entities.
Quite frankly, those entities are just looking for available ground. And if that available ground is in Deschutes or Crook County, they're gonna pay those fees. If that available ground is in Harney County, they're gonna pay those.
Exactly, exactly, so I, I hope that. I I had sensed a reluctance for some reason from our planning department, I can't quote John Wyng. And I, if there is, we need to know why, because I'm, without further information, I'm not for keeping them astronomically low.
I, I don't wanna chime in on your general deliberation, I just wanted to ask. There's been some emails about fee schedules and Holly's been working on compiling the fee schedules, is that something that we take action on and and approve and have discussion about?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, fees have to be enacted by an ordinance. And I checked with the clerk, with the county clerk. And um in order to enact an ordinance, it has to be read twice. Enacted, which the second reading then would be the event.
And so whether we do anything on corner preservation of the net fee or any of this stuff. We can do it every so often, we do the new ordinance with the updated fees, but there's, it it's a whole list of all of them, right, this time?
And that's what we're trying to get on track with, is one master.
Yeah.
Fee list, so that when we do it annually, it, everything gets done instead of piecemeal a couple of times throughout the year.
Um, the Eastern Oregon Workforce Board. Of which Harney County belongs uh to the Eastern Oregon Workforce Region. Uh the director, Erin Carpenter, I've invited her to come, she uh will be seeking. And I'll be in touch with Polly to get on the August sixth agenda to give you all an update and introduce. The work they do in case that's fairly new to you. Um, I encourage her to uh combine that with a work session with entities, we did this a few years ago. We had um Training and Employment Consortium person that worked here, uh the. Work Source Oregon High Desert Partnership, we invited certain folks that have anything to do with work. Workforce, including internships and stuff like that, and we had a roundtable right at this table. And it was a very good conversation, it's been a few years, so um. Uh she and I will be working to to set up that, just to make sure everybody's. On board, knows what's available, what's not, who, what is needed, what are they hearing is needed. But anyway, Erin, I I encouraged Erin, I said, why don't you come meet our county court? And brief them, so we'll probably see her August sixth. And then. To ask um Commissioner Frank if he knows or if he has uh an opinion on whether the county court as a county court. Is able to submit comments, whether it's on the forest plan or the Division five twelve rulemaking as a county court or not. See if that happened now. And and if we should or not, um I mean, through the B I P, I suppose. Um, there's an implied um general agreement on the direction of the forest plan, I would assume. But I don't want to assume that, we always retain our county court. Identity and authority for things as well. But since everything's gonna be happening pretty soon on. Division five twelve comments, um I know the comments that you came up with with um in conjunction with uh. Miss Bright, um were very good. And I appreciate that. I'm probably going to put in some comment of my own, it won't be at all like, it'll be the opposite of that, it'll be like some. Just verbal paragraph with one or two things rather than. Lining out exactly every rule, every parameter, every, you know, percentage and and stuff, I'm just. Gonna do one of those more. Probably related to adaptive management is what's on my mind anyways, and whether that's where it needs to be for the timelines and stuff they do. But I don't know, I haven't developed it yet, I I need to work with Harmony on that.
I think that the county court needs to officially submit comments for both of those processes. I had that in my general deliberation stuff. My hope was that Dominic would have a chance to go through ours because he really liked those comments, but he wanted. To put some other stuff in there and he was supposed to look at that last week and then, I think I might have derailed him because. I also asked about sending an email to Oregon Water Resource Department with several asks. One of which being that the director come here and present to us because I don't think that's ever happened. And ask for some ordination. There was a list of comments and I can, of questions that I wanted to send to the department. I wanted to ask him for a list of those wells and a few other things. And I think Dominic commented on those questions and maybe forgot to go through the actual comments. And I was worried because that deadline is coming up. The deadline's August seventh, our next meeting's August sixth. And so my hope is we will have those comments that I already shared with you guys with Dominic's additions to it. And we can discuss it and if, if we need to get him involved, we can have a conversation. But I think if we just have him, we can discuss him and if we can support them as a county court, then we can submit them as a county court. And for the BIC. We need to do something similar because if you don't submit. Uh comments and it can just be at the, at the Blue Mountains. Meeting coming up on the twenty fourth, Burnley. There's a formal process to submit comments. But if you don't submit comments that you don't have standing to object, if they don't meet your. Expectations, and I expressed a concern at the last BIC meeting. That every time I bring up a concern, they either seldom do they. Sometimes they explain this is why we can't meet your concern. Most of the time, they change it in the stinking plan. So I don't have a lot to bellyache about, but I, and they said, well, that's a good thing. But I wanna have comments. We want to have comments so that we have standing to object. And they said, well, what do you object to? I said, I don't know, but I wanna be objectionable if I need to be. So we'll have to figure that out. Like, like grazing, I brought that up. I don't think they addressed it enough. And they said, oh, we took your comments from last time. And that's in another section where we talk about grazing as a fire management. Okay.
But, but, and yet, they may feel that they are totally incorporating comment by adding something a little about grazing and it may miss the mark. You know, as to what we care about, who knows? We have to see where, where are you talking about and if that applies to everywhere you needed it to apply.
Everyone, everyone has gotten the emails with that link to the Blue Mountain Forest Planner Vision stuff. Jamie McCormick sent that out. We, I, we've got several different.
Yeah, I think I just got one just in the last day or two.
And those little one pagers, which that's the first time I had, saw those is that say. This is what it means for grace. This is what it means for timber. This is what it means for recreation. Those are pretty slick, but. Hopefully we'll have something for act five twelve by the next week. That's the plan. And prior to the deadline for official public comments on that forest plan. We'll have something hopefully far enough in advance that N-Rac can take a look at it. Say it's good. We can discuss it and make it so that it's something that we can officially as a court sign on. Does that answer your question about comments?
Yes.
Good. Oh, and one of the big things on the RAC five twelve comments that I'm gonna have to look back at. But the municipalities are real concerned. Really concerned. It's not just about the hundred and ten percent. It's about some of these subareas. Years ago, it was expressed they weren't gonna be an issue. Now they are. This is gonna pit neighbors against neighbors. And especially in the municipalities instance. That's what we say is if they don't do this hundred and ten percent deal, it's gonna take a bunch of farmers out of production because they have. Thousands of acre feet of water and they only use a fraction of it. And so that's the argument is if they don't give that up, that's less farmers and it's, it is making a contentious situation and.
Well, even if that hundred and ten percent is a rolling thing from year to year. That if, if more water use happens each year, so it's a rolling thing that, that it's, that um. That increases their, their allotment from year to year. Somewhere along the line. The two are gonna come against to each other that you can't roll forward any longer. Because, because, or, or that's exactly what's gonna happen. Somebody out in the valley is gonna be displaced.
They have, they have some really great concerns. City of Burns and the city of Hines. I talked to someone that is consulting with them this morning. And I just wanna make sure that our comments as a county reinforce and support what they're, what they're trying to do. Yeah, they're real, real wound up about it as well as should.
Yeah. I mean, I, I get if, if you have. Again, as a, as a, just throwing a number, if you have two thousand acre feet and you're only using five hundred of it. Then, yeah, there's room there to, to give up for somebody else. But, but as, hopefully as development would continue in Harney County, Burns and Hines. Somewhere you're gonna get to a point where those two are up against each other. And somebody, it's either gonna get frozen at that point or somebody's gonna give.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Frank?
Oh, yeah. The, the Wolf Resolution that was sent to the National Association of Counties. NACO, National Association of Counties. What was the O? It's a little O.
CO.
Oh, I got you. Anyway, it, it, it sailed through the Public Lands Committee. And so now that will be an official stance of NACO and they will lobby to have the Great Wolf fee listed. So that's, that's good. I would like to reach out to our legal counsel. And have him help draft a letter in response to that BLM. Letter about the wild horse gathered. Because in the June minutes, I was looking back through. The BLA manager said they were gonna gather riddle and Kyger. And it was a really exciting thing. Somebody asked him how far over their HMLs they were. And he said two hundred and fifty percent. And to me, from a county government perspective, that is unacceptable. If they had a management, a, a, a management uh tool plan. And they're just gonna back off because of litigation.
That, that, that concerned me on the correspondence was how abrupt, how abruptly they're stopping it.
Because there's.
I mean, there's always litigations, but I mean, this was rather abrupt.
But as a government that is either coordinated or cooperating, and I don't know what our status is, I. I would like to send them a letter, an official letter that says, find that unacceptable.
I agree. I would support that.
Yeah, if Dominic can, you know, other than just bellyaching about it, but maybe Dominic knows how to say. This is how it should be formatted. So if that's all right, I would love to.
Yes, I, the only caveat I could say there would be that. I don't know what the timeliness of the filing that the BLM got. You know, was it filed far enough out that this could have been taken care of? And not been preempted? Or was it filed so close to by the proponent? Or the whatever, uh the other. If it was filed so close to the deadline that this is the only way they could meet. Those public uh notice elements of NIBA.
I just, I wanted to holler at, at a lawyer who's got experience with public land stuff and say, can we? Tell them and maybe the Secretary of Interior, this is unacceptable. Two hundred and fifty percent over, I'm guessing that means there's an extra, at least an extra hundred and twenty horses on each one of those.
It, it, everybody loses.
Yeah, I have no idea. I don't remember what the HML is for those areas. Um I think the Kyger one is. I, I'm not sure it's in the hundreds. I think it's below a hundred. But still, that would mean if it's, if you're saying eighty. And that's uh a hundred and sixty, hun- two hundred horses to remove hundred and twenty if you're gonna get down to the AML.
Yeah. They need to, need to hold themselves accountable. And then the last thing was just the Fair Event Center update because we asked to have those regularly. We had a work session. We had a work session with the building department. I think that was before our last meeting. We gave an update on that, but. Commissioner Dorrell attended the work session, yeah, two days ago. With the fire marshal and the fire departments. And I think that was a real productive meeting. They set up a plan forward for how they'll be able to use the anticipated completion of the building for fair. And then at the Fair Board meeting that night. They were able to address a lot of the concerns, the livestock. Youth livestock and the sale committee had and had the construction guys there to also talk about that. So I think everybody's kind of on the same path forward, trying to make it happen, make sure it'll be safe.
And, and um. Again, if they, uh the Fair Board. Writes some kind of letter to the community, what you can expect when it's closer to fair, just so people who. Are unaware of all that's going on and all the moving parts won't be surprised. Their expectations won't be. Off track so much. Uh they're, they're, they were problem solving everything. And, you know, uh, and that's what you do. That's what you do when. And you get a lot of things that have to be worked out. Yeah, the tone, the tone was good. And I also wanna say that um I am very. I went onto the website to, to look at the Fair Board minutes and they've caught them up in the last. The, they're very good now. They have information in there. Uh so I'm pleased just. No, good job. It, before, there wasn't a lot and then they looked after a while, you know, with the minutes. And now they're, I mean, I could read it and I could actually get information that was informative to me. Appreciated that.
Um as that liaison, I would ask, and I heard the other day that, and I know they've mentioned it before and I've mentioned it to them. But they um have been seeking private donation money, contribution money for the construction of the event center. Um I would remind and ask that somebody coordinate with our auditor, the treasurer. Because once those funds come to the county, they're no, they're, they're public funds and they're accountable. Um so I would ask that uh to ensure that however we need to account for those funds that they're accounted for properly. Um and whether that means that they're added to the budget in a revenue line or whatever the auditor says we need to do. Um, not, just a couple of things, just to let you know what's being worked on. Um I'm working on the public, the first. Professional services contract for the surveyor. Um I reached out to another county who has the same kind of system structure and they have a contract. So instead of reinventing the wheel. I'm waiting to get that from them and then I'll have it approved by county council and we can execute that with the surveyor. Recycling, we're continuing to work with DEQ and the. CAA, um.
Circular Action Alliance.
Circular Action Alliance that is actually the money holder for where the, the. The producers of, of specific items, whether that be food, service item, you know, like styrofoam containers and this, that. Um all those industries ended up basically getting the uh attacks on them. But they had to some, had to pay into um a recycling fund. That then those funds are supposed to help specifically rural communities that are. Beyond fifty miles away from a depot or a recycling um hub or other facilities to, to take those materials to. Um, anyway, so we continue to work with both DEQ and them to, to define exactly what we need to do and how we're gonna do it. With our nonprofit uh rimrock recycling partner. Um it's, it's. I, I can be honest with you, I, I, I don't agree with the statute. I don't agree that we're be having the mandate to do it. The statute basically relieves the municipalities of having to do it because they're under four thousand people. But the county itself is under four thousand people in its unincorporated areas. So why are we being forced to do it? And it's, we're looking into it and try, I've got county council working on it. As I can see it, uh potential down the road where, who knows what the future of our, of rimrock nonprofit is. And then it's just left in the lap, lap of the county and, and financial. We don't have, we don't have the finances to expand into other areas of service.
It's getting pretty crowded over there.
So um we're working on it. We have consult with council and with DEQ coming up. Good. Um, long-term recovery group, I had a meeting yesterday afternoon with the, the chair of their board. For the flooding for assistance to the, to the uh residents, mer- uh people. Homeowners who have had damage and need assistance. Um, they have received. Ballpark roughly to date about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand of which was from the state. Uh for assistance to homeowners for repairs. Um they're continuing to look for other funding sources, whether it be government, public dollars or private. Uh dollars. Um, we have representation on that board. There's, they're still growing. I mean, it's, it's, they've only been in existence for what? Couple months now, so they, they're figuring it out and growing and consulting with other long-term recovery groups that have been added a little bit longer and whatnot. So. Um, we do a bit of work, a little bit of work for the community and people who. That have the resources to be able to rebuild or repair to get back into the homes. Just other day-to-day business, been busy.
Will you tell us a little bit more about the barbecue tomorrow? What, what help you need or I mean, how, what the setup's gonna be like? Are there shifts to sign up for for flipping burgers or is it just tofu?
Um, we didn't do one last year. Traditionally, the county has done one every year and they usually do it, I think.
On the lawn.
Just out here on the lawn. Last year, we didn't do one because of the fires and the smoke uh concentration in the air. So got back to the, the cycle of doing that this year. Holly, Deanna, I think uh kind of the two main ramrods of it. Um. If you all are, wanna come out and spell me for flipping burgers, that's. Absolutely. I'm not, I'm not territorial there, so come on out. Um have some food yourself and mix and mingle and. It's about. Appreciation to the staff.
And you reckon it's gonna go from noon to five?
Well, that's what we set it up for, but it is supposed to be super hot, so I'm not quite sure. Some departments are sending people in shifts because they can't all leave. Um so we'll see what happens, but. I'm planning on buying extra burgers so we can take them to the staff that wasn't able to come, so that we still can.
Our jail staff, dispatch staff. Maybe public health staff, somebody that has to stay at home health. People have to stick around and monitor or man desks and phones and whatnot. Whatever, but have enough to, to share, get it out to people.
Cool.
I don't have anything else, Tom? All right, not hearing any other business, we shall adjourn.
Thank you.